Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school board meeting, the regular board meeting on Tuesday, September 27. Thank you for your patience. It took us a little longer to get started as we were in closed session. We are going to go ahead and call the roll, please. No, we're not going to call the roll. Yes, we're going to call the roll.
We cannot.
We cannot. Thanks, Lana. Yes.
Member Conley?
Here.
Member Lenichek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglio?
Here.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Here.
Member Faso?
Here.
Thank you, Lana. We'll now move to the Plagiarial Legions. We're now going to move straight to move things a little bit around and move straight to the public hearing on the budget with Ms. Malick.
Is there anyone who's here for the public hearing on the budget? Thank you. The tentative budget by law is posted on our website since the tentative budget presentation about a month ago. It is located on the website.
It would have been helpful if there was a link to it on Board DAX.
Thank you.
Anybody else who came to speak on the, for the public hearing on the budget?
Okay, we're going to close the budget hearing and move on to the recognitions and presentations portion of our meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, we are recognizing our newly tenured teachers. Teachers receive tenure in a school district when they have successfully completed four years of service in that district and have received satisfactory evaluations. Achieving tenure in District 25 really is a very important statement from the board and from the administration that these teachers have had a real positive impact on our students and on our community and that we look forward to making a commitment to them to continuing their employment, continuing their impact on our students for many years to come. So, we do recognize them at a board meeting each year in District 25 because it really is a very important commitment that we are making to them, very happy and very pleased to make. So, we're going to call their names by school, and when we call you, if you would come up, we have a certificate and a new stress ball with a smiley face that we're going to be giving to students in the future who come to board meetings, and we thought you probably deserve one as well. I know not everybody could be here tonight, but we are going to call you up. If you're here, please come up and receive your certificate and your stress ball, and then we'll be asking you to join Adam Harris and your school administrators in the hallway. He's going to be doing a picture of you by school so that we can celebrate you online as well.
Definitely. Congratulations to all the newly tenured teachers. We're so proud of you, and we're so happy you're here. It is, you know, teaching is definitely, it is, has become a challenging career, and your contributions to our students here in District 25 means a lot to us, means a lot to the board and the whole community. So, thank you so much.
Okay, so if you want to hand these, and I'll hand these, from Dryden Elementary School, Rachel Andalito, Laura Dietrich, Colleen Foster, and Beth Simon Kopik. Congratulations.
Can I give you a certificate for your colleagues?
Okay, thank you. From Greenbrier Elementary School, Megan Hagman and Beth Hornberg. If you could share these with your colleagues, please. Thank you. From Ivy Hill Elementary School, Asima Badi, Kathryn Konamikis, Georgia Panousis, and Lauren Runyon. Would you share these with your colleagues, please? Thank you. I gave her all to share. Thank you. I don't believe she's here tonight, but we will still celebrate. From Olive Mary Stitt Elementary School, Erin Matray. And also, we'll celebrate tonight from Patton Elementary School, Stacy Stanton. From Thomas Middle School, Kimberly Malinowski and Christina Paparonas. Would you share these with your colleagues, please? Thank you. And from Westgate Elementary School, Laura Coughlin, Michelle Gillespie, and Heather Would you share these with your colleagues, please? Thank you. And from Windsor Elementary School, Allison Keo and Alexandra LeBarrette. Would you pass those out, please? Thank you. Again, we'll take a picture, and congratulations, and thank you to all of our dedicated teachers.
Okay, that is, the board's favorite part is recognize, the recognitions piece, so that was very special today to recognize our teachers today. And here's, we also really appreciate community input, and so to, that is this portion of the meeting that we're going into. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And number three, please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff, and the board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. This evening, thank you, Lana, for the notes of who we have speaking tonight. First speaker today is Ms. Sheila Cruz.
Good evening, Sheila Cruz, and thank you for allowing me to comment about three books that don't belong in the schools with the themes of CRT, gender, and sex. Our Skin begins with a false narrative that a bunch of white people made up an idea called race, and it says, "White people were better, smarter, prettier, and that they deserved more than everybody else." They follow this with pictures of white people accepting awards and white kids teasing black kids. Then there's the little sentence, "This isn't true or fair at all, but it's a story that's been told for a long time." So, why, I must ask, is the district perpetuating the lie that even the author says isn't true? Is it to instill a visual prejudice in the very young? District 25 always had positive books echoing the school themes of Everybody Counts, The Five Pillars of Character, which promoted healthy minds and good stewardship. Don't diminish your accomplishments, District 25, by bending to this negative propaganda. It doesn't belong in the schools. It Feels Good to Be Yourself is another book that doesn't belong in District 25 schools. A book about gender identity for five-year-olds? Stop going along with the pop culture ideology that there is infinite number of genders. Follow the science. Stick to the facts. In humans, as in the animal kingdom, there are only two genders, male and female. An excerpt. What a baby's body looks like when it's born can be a clue to what the baby's gender will be, but not always. Well, we're born naked with female or male parts. That is what defines us in a gender category. Elementary children cannot comprehend thought-consciousness to the depths that the popular gender identity crowd is fabricating. This is not age-appropriate context for five-year-olds, much less 10-year-olds. Stand up, District 25, for science and promote healthy chronological learning. Lastly, the book Hearts Unbroken promotes promiscuity for the tender ages of middle schoolers. This book with such explicit visual language, as I quote, "And then your boyfriend says, 'I don't have a condom,' but he slips two fingers into the front of your panties. Do you?" he asks. Page 276. This book doesn't belong in the school either. We parents have been protecting our children from smut on the internet, and now we have to worry about what is being taught at the schools? What positive experience can this book possibly offer a young adolescent going through the hardest years of their lives, puberty? Why would the school board and the administrators and teachers approve of these books? Do you honestly, honestly believe that you cannot tell a boy from a girl at birth? How far down the rabbit hole of lies, gender confusion, and sexual exploitation are the board and the administrators willing to go before society disintegrates?
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Stand up, District 25. Do the right thing. Set the example. Be the one to move these books off the shelves. They don't belong in our schools. Thank you.
The next speaker, Anita Pacheco.
Thank you, Anita Pacheco. I am a resident of Arlington Heights, and as you can read on my comment form there, I just have a quick question. Do you all make all of your books that you have in your curriculum available to the public to view anywhere on your websites or anywhere else?
Thanks for that question.
Is my minute up? Is my time up, or can I continue?
You may continue.
So, are you not able to answer? It's a simple yes or no question.
I can follow up with you and show you where they're all, all the curriculum resources are on the website.
So, it is on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, I believe if I'm reading this handwriting correctly, Elia Fishman?
Hello. My name is Elia Fishman. So, I'm very thankful for District 25 for communication between teachers and the parents, but recently I've become a concerned parent. I'm a doctor. I saw the book, The Skin, and I show it today in my colleagues. I show it to the nurses and the doctors with the graphic pictures and with transgender agenda, and the comments from the nurses and the doctors, they were very outraged. They were very outraged. They said, "If you want us to collect the signature so that book doesn't exist in the elementary school 25, I can get the signatures from the nurses and the doctors so this book will be no longer available." I just want to, for a second, it's a very popular topic about transgender, but Dr. Byrne, as you know, is very dangerous when the kids become transgender. Just statistically, and this is a Transgender Health article from 2019, so transgender people have 45, 46% suicidal attempt, and national average is less than 3%. The suicidal thought, suicidal attempt is 27%, and national average much less than 1%. And so, the success of the people with transgender is much lower than not transgender. This is very, very dangerous. These books are really hurting the children, and they need to be removed immediately. Dr. Byrne, I really hope for, for the goodwill, for your goodwill, that this book will be immediately removed. If you need the signature, I can bring the signatures of the nurses and the doctors, and I can bring it to you with the meeting or with your email.
Our next speaker is Sam Pappas.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Byrne, my name is Sam Pappas. My daughter attends Westgate, and I would like to echo what the prior speakers on this topic have said, but I believe I have a somewhat compromise. We're not here talking about book burning, or censoring, or removing books. In many cases, there are books that should be removed that are explicitly pornographic, have obscenity, that are simply age-appropriate, but books that have diverse viewpoints, maybe politically or whatever, it's a fine line. It could be a judgment call. But this issue isn't new. It's come up with the motion picture, in motion pictures, in the video industry, in the music industry. You see parental advisory warnings. If you want to take your child to movie theater, certain movies are even rated restricted, PG, general audience, R. So, this isn't new. This is something that has been put in place for audiovisual content, reading material, even music, for goodness sake, that might be damaging or inappropriate for children. So, I think we could put something like that in place here, a type of flagging mechanism that would, that each parent can look or go through and say, "Look, I don't want my child." This is a book, Our Skin, that was just mentioned. It's at Westgate, and it's designed, it says, "It teaches critical race theory targeting K through third grade level students," and the prior speakers mentioned exactly what it contains. Now, if a parent, if we have the technology, and if a child looks at this, and if a parent flags it because it's age inappropriate, this book will be restricted. The child will not be able to check out the book or gain access online. If anybody, if a parent says, "This is wonderful. I want my kid to review this. This is fantastic," then go ahead. It's your decision. And the same thing with this other book. It's at Westgate. It Feels Good to Be Yourself. Now, if my daughter came in and took this, and she said, "I have to read a book by tomorrow," and starts reading through this and gets confused and has some mental anguish, how am I going to deal with that? How am I going to pay her psychological, her psychiatric expenses to try to explain something to her at that level? She's not aged, she's not mature enough to decide fact from fiction, okay? So, some people believe there are multiple genders, male and female. They could believe whatever they want. If they want to believe they're a cat, a dog, a butterfly, it's their decision, but coming from a school, an area of authority where children look up to teachers, they should be able to, a parent should be able to protect their children and say, "Look, this is content that we flagged that we think is inappropriate. You're not at that point where you can check it out."
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Your time is up. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Melissa, do we have a slip for you?
No. Melissa Kerr speaking. Do you have an update as to when the Cook County Second Installment Property Tax Bill will be delivered to our houses and when it will be due?
Thank you for the question.
All right, and don't vote for tax increment finance districts because they, the municipalities take the property tax revenue that the taxing bodies, school districts, would get, and they use it for their own pet projects that may fail.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, tonight, our first item, we're going to split the superintendent's report in two because we do have Officer O'Leary standing by should we have questions that he could assist with. So, we're going to review for the board tonight kind of a school safety update. Does somebody have my? Adam, do you have my presentation loaded? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so, we're going to review a few things tonight. We're going to go kind of quickly through this, but please do stop me if you have questions, or we'll have plenty of chance for questions at the end. We're going to review the plans and practices that we have in the district, some of our important partnerships, some information about facilities, about a safety audit that we have coming up in October, our partnership with the Arlington Heights Police Department. Thank you, Officer O'Leary, for being here, a quick review of the mental health supports, and how we communicate when we have emergencies to parents. So, plans and practice. You've probably heard of some of these. Some of the drills that we work on with students include our soft lockdown, our hard lockdown, school bus evacuations, which we did when I was a kid many, many years ago, relocation drills, so should we need to leave the building and go somewhere else, we do have relocation partnerships, shelter in place, which we called tornado drills when I was a kid, and medical emergencies. We actually have well over 40 specific emergency situation plans in our crisis manual that we are ready for. This is just an example of those common ones that you may have heard of. But again, we have many specific plans for emergencies. Even the ones shown here are only a small selection of things that we have guidance on, on how to respond should those occur. Each school does have a structure that is reviewed at least every year, our incident command structure. Staff members are assigned roles so they know who is leading what area during an emergency, from operations planning to logistics and to public information. There's also a district-wide threat assessment team and district and school-wide crisis teams that can be gathered proactively during an actual emergency and after a situation to make sure that all necessary areas are considered. Each of these members, as well as the entire district staff, is involved in annual training for our main safety procedures, as well as updated annually as safety procedures evolve for our police, fire, and schools. I personally have been involved in dozens of lockdown role-play practices with police and first responders. District 25 administrators have been involved in several experiences where they have worked with police, fire, and other first responders as they've participated in armed intruder trainings. The Arlington Heights Police Department, in fact, facilitated one of the most detailed safety response experiences schools in our area have had. The Arlington Heights Police Department facilitated an experience that included police, fire, dispatch, SWAT team, mental health providers, Northwest Community Hospital, paramedics, District 25 administrators, and administrative assistants, as well as neighboring district administrators who came to join in and see how this practice went. Utilizing our own District 25 facilitated facilities, excuse me, we participated in armed intruder scenarios along with all of these partners together. In addition to being involved in the scenarios, we all worked as response teams to react immediately as we would in a real situation. And just as each school has a command structure, so does all of Village of Arlington Heights. We have a collaborated crisis plan, which includes a command structure involving leaders from District 25, the chief of police, fire, village, park district, library, hospital, et cetera. Many of our staff members in District 25 have also participated in a walkthrough of armed intruder scenarios. Together with the leadership of the police department, we learned a great deal about how to best protect our students and ourselves. Officer Malick and Officer O'Leary and I are scheduled to visit every school staff this fall to provide updated training and to answer questions staff may have about our safety procedures and safety in general. Our students will continue to participate in age-appropriate drills. A recent update to the law, in fact, requires us to announce all drills to students and to parents prior to practicing them. Our staff does an exceptional job of helping students practice safety strategies while also making sure we're offering age-appropriate explanations in a calm and caring manner. Of course, our safety depends on the important people and partnerships that we have here in District 25. In addition to our annual review of our safety procedures, administrators meet with area partners throughout each school year. Moreover, we communicate with each group whenever the need arises. Typically, our school administrators are connecting with Officers Malick and O'Leary at least weekly for everything from questions to requests for assistance for individual students and families to planning for training. I meet with the leaders of all of our area organizations numerous times throughout the school year, and safety is always one of our topics to review. Moreover, we connect whenever a safety situation arises in the area so that we can alert and support each organization community-wide. Our officers are restarting the area's school safety task force with great purpose and planning. This group involves all administrators from all area schools, public and private, as well as technology and safety specialists. The group meets to get updates on the latest safety procedures and products and shares extensively with each other to benefit all students. We have strong, ongoing, positive relationships. We have a community awareness and planning among all of the Arlington Heights partners. I feel confident that we have the most up-to-date information and that we are proactive about safety topics. I want to highlight just a few things about our facilities for you to be aware of. When we think about safety in terms of facilities, we really look at access control. How are our vestibules? We have, you know, the phone video doorbell system where people have to be buzzed in. We can see them. We can talk with them before we allow them in. We have key cards that staff have access to buildings, and it tracks when those key cards are used. We have lockdown buttons that I'll go over a bit with you in very specific areas of our building should we need to call for a lockdown and call for immediate dispatch assistance. We have building intercom access through every phone in every room in our buildings. We have phones again in each room, a camera system in all of our schools, and our door locks. We are looking right now, I'll talk a little bit about our internal door locking system, and we're looking at updating that throughout the district. So, some quick things about access control. As you know, all of our exterior doors are locked during the school day. We do have the video system that allows us to greet visitors both by sight and by voice and asking them any questions we need before having them visit. So, that, I think all of our families are used to, having to be acknowledged at the entrance. And then, when we do have visitors who are going to be in our buildings, we do use their ID through our Raptor Visitor Management System before allowing them access to the building. The Raptor system basically identifies any sex offenders, and if that should be flagged when an ID is run through, they, of course, cannot come in our school. All of our staff have badges, kind of like I'm wearing right now, that does give, and that our board members have as well, that does give them access to exterior doors. These badges can be timed, so our CAP staff, for example, has badges, but they only have certain... times and certain days that their badges will work. And the badges could be set for specific buildings as well. This year, we have reinstituted our ID badge system for staff and for visitors, and this is very clearly displayed in all of our schools. Any adult in that building should be easily recognizable by a student based on the color of the lanyard. As I mentioned, each school has numerous lockdown buttons to quickly communicate an active threat or a potential threat. It makes an announcement to the entire building and directly to police emergency dispatch. Every building has an intercom system that can communicate throughout the entire building inside and outside or to a specific room. Our telephones and our telephone system has multiple functions to communicate internally and externally. Again, we have a 911, of course, like you all do, that we can dial. We also can, from every room, access the all-call. So any adult in the building could hit the all-page button and make an announcement throughout the school. Each building has security cameras to capture events that may occur near or inside a building. Currently, in our elementary schools, we have exterior cameras only. In our middle schools, we have interior corridors, the hallways, as well as exterior cameras. These cameras do record on detected motion only, and the footage can be retrieved by district administration should the police or fire need that information. Each door in our building has the ability to lock the exterior handle with a key from the corridor side of the door. Newer rooms, so since we've been doing additions, we have the additional ability to lock a corridor-side handle from inside the room. We are, as we update and do additions, we change the locking system so that it's more manageable and that a teacher can lock it more easily from the inside of the room as opposed to having to reach outside of the room to lock it. We are currently piloting a mechanism, mechanism that would allow that in all of our classes and actually is a, I don't know if we have a picture of it, I don't think we do, is a mechanism that you can just turn with a thumb. You don't need a key. You turn it and it says locked or unlocked. But with a key, if you are a teacher and you're out of your room, you can use your key to get back in. It's a real quick, because we know in emergencies, our fine motor skills are one of the first things to go. Sometimes getting your key and getting in a lock can be difficult, so we're looking at updating all of the doors throughout the district. Again, we're piloting that in a few places right now. District 25 participates in a safety audit by our police and fire department every single year. Additionally, we have been participating in a safety audit by a national school safety company that is considered the expert in their field. We have used this firm to provide District 25 with this information over the past six or six years. This will be the third time in the past six years that they're coming and doing a safety audit on-site. The company will be here this October to do an extensive audit. They visit every school to inspect our physical facilities, our security hardware, safety procedures, our emergency supplies, and safety knowledge of our personnel. They provide us with an extensive report for each school that includes any findings for us to consider, relevant photographs, and prioritized recommendations. So they will list, this is a number-one priority, something you should address right away. This is a number-five priority. If you ever do construction, it might be something to look at. So they rank things for us to consider. Those site visits also involve inspections of architectural openings. What I mean is each of our doors. A local door hardware manufacturer level representative comes and looks at all of our door hardware and again provides us an audit report. So before we make a final decision on retrofitting our doors, we wanted to get one more year of update from the safety audit to see if they agree with the mechanism that we think we want to install. Because again, we're reviewing all of those door hardware systems. Ryan Schultz has been proactively aligning the systems anytime we add additions, and he's been having that system piloted in some of our buildings and classrooms. We just need that final audit information to make a recommendation. When an auditor comes, they look at these four things: deterrence, can you deter any threat? Can you detect a threat? Can you delay it? And you have a response procedure in When they do those safety audits, our resource officers are usually attending with them, our building administrators are going around as well, as well as typically some of our technology administrators who have assist, who have understandings of the systems are going through those and getting some live feedback while they go through. But then again, we'll get a very extensive report as a follow-up. Arlington Heights Police Department trains consistently for school emergencies. Officer O'Leary and his partner Officer Malik have also recently participated in the National School Safety Conference. I want to appreciate and thank the board for supporting that and really appreciate John and Danny for taking the initiative to want to go and get the latest information that they could. Training for police response actually occurs in our schools when we're not in session as well as off-site. They are trained, just so that you're aware, that the first officer on-site during an emergency is going to enter and engage the intruder. So about 10 years ago, it was wait for a second officer and go in together. About 15 years before that, it was wait for a SWAT team and go in together. Now it's the first officer on-site is going in and going straight to an intruder. They're not waiting for a command. They become the commander of that site if they are the first on-site. Our school resource officers, again, attend safety conferences locally and recently nationally. They do a rapid deployment and rescue task force training, what I would call kind of a SWAT team situation. They do training on social media, cyberbullying, online and threat assessments as well. Our police have multiple methods of accessing our schools in the event of an emergency. If they needed to, they have breaching tools in every police vehicle that could get in any of our schools. Hopefully, they'll never need those because they also have fobs, kind of like our ID cards, in every police vehicle that can access all of our exterior doors at all of our buildings in the district. And they also have kind of a knox box where they have additional keys, exterior and interior, should they need those. Our first responders also have access to each school's site plans, door maps, interior floor maps, in all of their vehicles. They have them in hard copy in the police station and they have them electronically that they can pull up instantly for every one of our schools. These plans are regularly updated with current information. They have door numbers. They have visuals for them on which doors might have students inside or which doors are maybe boilers or, you know, electrical systems. So they have easy access to that in their police cars, as well as we have many markings on the outside of our doors. But these maps, again, instantly give them floor plans should there be an emergency. Just wanted to touch briefly on mental health supports that we offer. Our school resource officers also support our families with mental health support through their Arlington Heights Police Department social worker. District 25's implementation of our social-emotional curriculum ruler is beginning to address mental health needs on a tier-one basis. Tier-one meaning our students as a whole. We also have tier-two and tier-three supports for students who need extra supports either in small groups or individually. As you know, we use the DESA screener in the past. We now use that DESA on a small group or an individual basis as needed. Of course, we are, our teachers are skilled at referring kids who need special assistance. Many of our parents will call and ask for support. And our social workers and psychologists are also trained on an individual threat assessment tool that they will use should a student need that support. The board has increased staffing for social workers and psychologists in the last few years, and their time has quickly filled with student needs. There has been no lull time in using their expertise to support more students. And finally, in communication, we do notify families ahead of time of all safety drills via our school newsletters. Emergency information is communicated to families. They can sign up for text, and I know that Mr. Harris is going to put that in the upcoming district dish, a reminder how any family could subscribe to text should they, we use those for inclement weather or for school emergencies. School Messenger is kind of our email system that goes to all families, and of course, our social media accounts anytime that we would need to utilize those. Proactive safety information is always shared with the entire community. What we mean by that is if we have a stranger danger situation involving a certain school, we notify all families in that school, and then we notify all families across the district that we had sent out information related to X school and that we wanted all families to also be aware of that. So that's a real quick run-through, but just wanted to get you kind of a high-level idea. We will be, of course, talking about this topic again after our safety audit in October and bringing any important aspects of that to the board after that experience. Do you have any questions?
Just to begin with, I just wanted to thank Dr. Bynne for looking into this further on the board's request, and Officer O'Leary for coming and, you know, kind of giving us a kind of good handle of what's going on. Thank you, and I'll open up to my colleagues.
Question, comments?
May I, President?
Yes, Rich.
First off, I want to, you know, obviously thank you, Officer O'Leary, for coming in. I know you spent some time with us earlier, but do appreciate the time you spend with the schools, working in the community. It definitely makes a sense of the police and the community, and, you know, even our fire department for that matter do a wonderful job of spending time in the school. So thank you for that, as well as to the district. I mean, it's great to hear, to see the drills that go on, the equipment that goes in. Obviously, we're trying to be prepared for the utmost that might occur, but hope it never occurs, and we take steps accordingly. I just have one question. One of the slides, and just to maybe clarify, when an alert, when they hit the blue button or whatever, I think it said by radio versus cell or phone lines. Is that really how it works, or it just kind of popped in my head there?
So basically, I'll review and maybe this will answer. So, of course, we, you know, call 911. 911 can also, you can text 911. You can do an open 911 call where you dial 911 and leave it the phone laying there if you're unable to talk. So 911 is our best go-to usually because we can verbally tell the dispatcher what's going on and they can give information to responders. But in our schools, we also have, again, several lockdown buttons located in strategic places, excuse me, that we can push, basically, and that goes directly to dispatch. That dispatch is instantly sending out police, fire, personnel. And when that button gets pushed, an announcement goes on at schools that we are now in a lockdown drill. Please follow your lockdown procedures. So when dispatch gets that notification, the initial thought is there's an armed intruder or some kind of lockdown, serious lockdown needed at a school that they had to utilize the panic button. And first responders are responding with that in mind. What we hopefully can do is start getting them more information so they have more details before they actually show up. And so we, of course, would be doing that. But should we not be able to call 911 or need to activate that button, it initiative, it instantly puts us in lockdown mode and dispatch responds as that a lockdown button was hit at XYZ school.
Slide 14.
Thank you. You're going to have to tell me what number, 13, 14?
Yeah.
Okay.
Radio's, we're getting a number over cellular, a greater signal.
Correct. The other thing I'll mention here that I didn't highlight is we've been, we're almost done, we'll be done this year. We're also installing these blue flashing lights in large areas like the commons, the gym, and outside where the intercom may not be real easy to hear or may not be clear. When the, these are only activated by a lockdown button. So if a lockdown button gets pushed, it goes directly to dispatch and it sets off these blue lights. So that if someone is outside and they see a blue light, like a gym class, that tells them, go away, don't come in. We've got some education to do, both for our staff and for our community, because these are new, so that community would know as well. If you're coming to pick up your student from CAP after school, don't come in if the blue light is going.
Okay, any other questions?
I just want to thank Dr. Bynne for your commitment to school safety and the safety for all our kids. I know that's, that's a hard commitment to make, but the day-to-day and what you've described here in enclosed session really shows your commitment to our kids. I also want to really thank and commend Officer O'Leary and the Arlington Heights Police Department. I don't think it's well-known that a lot of school districts are pining for one SRO, and the Arlington Heights Police Department to provide us with two is outstanding, and I really appreciate that and the dedication that your department is providing for our district and the well-being of our students. So thank you, and thank you to the department.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Moving right along, we're going to go on to board communications. And the first piece is board member updates from any of our colleagues. Any updates today?
I'll quickly jump in. They're just some fun updates, actually. It was really fun to be at the Rolling Meadows High School Friday football, and there's Friday football going on in all our schools, and it's kind of neat to see our students, you know, who graduated from our systems, on the fields and cheering, and just such a fun time to be at the high schools to see our former K-8 students. So that was kind of neat. And also, I, you know, as, as a board, we were invited to a celebration for a retiree at the Arlington Heights Library, Deb Smart's retirement. So it was neat to be there as board colleagues to congratulate her as, for her public service to the community. So as board members, we were at that event, and it was good to be at the library, at the Arlington Heights Library, and talk about partnerships, which Rich was talking about. You know, the school district has strong partnerships, not only with our fire department, our police department, the library, the park district, and we really truly believe in collaborating with all agencies and being there to support them, cheer them on, and work together.
Okay, let us move on to Ed Redd with Rich and Stacy.
Just two quick things to update the board on. First is next week, Thursday, at the Hilton-Northbrook is the annual kickoff for Ed Redd. So it may sound, it's called the Hilton-Chicago-Northbrook, but it's that, it's the old Algarve on Milwaukee there, but, you know, off that side road there. So if you have an opportunity, that would be great. Everyone is welcome. So that's next Thursday coming up. The other thing, just because, you know, Ed Redd is focused on the state, and maybe we should focus on like the county is our, since there was a question, maybe I'll address it right now. The county did address the property tax bills. So Crane's reported that Board President Tony Perenwinkle announced that the property tax bills will go out on December 1st and will be due on December 31st. So think of it as your happy new year gift as those go out. And obviously, the article went on to say what impact that has on all the taxing bodies that are supposed to receive it and budgets and all those types of things. But what they didn't say is when will next year's? You know, if you recall, this year they came out in February. So will it be December and then, oh, by the way, hey, February will be the next bill coming out as well? So will it be December and then, oh, by the way, hey, February will be the next bill coming out as well? So just something to keep in mind. I know Stacy will do us a great job of balancing when dollars actually start rolling in from that particular piece. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, for that update. Stacy?
Ed Red did host a webinar last week or so on the very property tax issue. So as Rich said, tax bills are expected to be due by the end of December. So they're expecting that taxing bodies will get our tax rates by the end of October. So as I think I mentioned with the budget, it doesn't reflect the most accurate property tax information because I had to project the rates for the 2021 levies since we won't have those before the budget is required to be adopted. They also talked about a lot of the refunds that go through PTAB and the Cook County Board of Review. The PTAB is closed for 2016 and '17. They're starting to open the PTAB cases for 2018 and '19. So they're about four years behind. Total tax appeals in Cook County in 2016 were 13,000, but only 569 went through PTAB. And those are the only ones we get notice of. So you think about over 12, and again, that's all of Cook County. But, you know, over 12,000 of them go through and we never hear about them until we get the refund statement, that a refund was issued. So that's another piece of balancing the whole refund issue where prior-year tax dollar refunds are coming out of current-year collections.
Thank you, Stacy. We're, and as far as IASB, I'll be reporting, and if my colleague Greg has anything. The conference is coming up and really thank you so much to Lana for helping. You know, we're all volunteers on this board and all have full-time positions. So Lana keeps us organized and preparing and mentally preparing for the conferences coming up. So board colleagues, what you'll see in your inbox that Lana sent us, I reviewed it. It was a really great document that Lana's put together to help us plan because we truly believe that a board that learns together leads together. And so have a look in the conference planner that Lana sent you. Look at any of the sessions that interest you. We all come, the beauty of our board and all effective school boards is there's diversity of thought and diversity of industry leaders right here at our table. So look at the different sessions that interest you and kind of plug them in so we can almost, it's a large conference so we can divide and conquer and learn from each other and see, you know, some of our colleagues are really up with finance. Some are really good with org change. Some, so we can kind of go into these different spaces and learn from you so that when we come back from the conference, it'll be a good time at open session where we'll share what we learned very quickly, like one or two, you know, one to three things we learned from each session. And definitely, if you want to share notes with us, we'd appreciate that, too. So that has already in your inboxes. If you get that back to Lana, Lana, did you give us a deadline for that, to get that back to you, to keep us even super organized?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, you, yeah, you don't have to. This is mostly in for internal document for us. So have a look at that and get that, you know, get that filled out so we can all kind of learn from each other and see what we're going to. And then Northbrook, Northbrook, no, sorry, the North Cook ISB Fall Division Meeting is in Evanston on October 26th. So I know some of us will be going there and driving up to Evanston for a professional development opportunity. Greg, do you have anything to add to that as my ISB counterpart? Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to NSSCO with Scott and Gina.
I will once again promote the bingo night. I have the flyers up here at the Arlington Aisle House. This is on Wednesday, October 12th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is a fundraiser to benefit the NSSCO Foundation and NSSCO itself. So I have the flyers. This is going to be a great time and I plan on being there, so I hope to see everyone there. So I got flyers up here if you want to grab them. They're going fast, so take one while they last. As well, Oktoberfest, Fall Fest in Mount Prospect. NSSCO is doing something that I think a lot of communities are starting to do now for families and students with special needs. They're opening the Fall Fest an hour early for NSC, NSSCO and any families and students with special needs so they can accommodate those community members accordingly. So that's, that's a great thing that NSSCO is partnering with Fall Fest in Mount Prospect because NSSCO does serve communities in the Northwest suburbs, Mount Prospect being one of them. And if you have a chance on Saturday, October 8th, from noon to 1:00, or actually, let me see what time. Noon to 1:00, yes. Stop on out and see our NSSCO students in Mount Prospect. It's downtown. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Scott. And then we will go on to communication from our district partners. For Arlington Heights Council PTA, Nicole Barber is actually, the leadership from Arlington Heights Council PTAs is representing our district at the Northwest Cook Regional Meeting tonight. So they couldn't be here, so they're working hard on the behalf of our community. So thanks to them while they're gone. And so they'll be here at the next board meeting. But ABC 25 Foundation, we have our very own Gina Faso.
Thank you. So for ABC 25, they're actually having their board meeting this evening. So we had, we had to divide and conquer there, too. Currently, ABC 25 is looking for a few liaisons for the grants for Greenbrier and Patton. Allison, if we have any volunteers, if anyone wants to help out and support that at Greenbrier and Patton, we need two liaisons on, that would sit and help us score all the wonderful grants that we're getting. Grants will be open until the end of the month, so please make sure that teachers are submitting. We have started to receive some submissions and they're, they're actually very, I like the ones that we, we've started to receive already. They're very interesting. I love looking at what our teachers come up with. It's incredible. And then the last piece is there's still a membership push. So for each school, if 25% of the families and the teachers all join to support ABC 25, $2,500 goes back to that school for use on whatever it is that they need. And currently, we're falling a little bit short, but there's still time to get there. We have until the end of the year. So I would just encourage anybody who has an interest or who isn't sure to please go take a look at what ABC 25 does. Literally, we collect funds and we give them back to our teachers in the form of grants so that they can do creative and innovative things in their classroom for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gina. In this section, last but not least, we have Allison Berg from the ATA.
Good evening, everybody. I'm sticking with the top five for my theme for the year. So I decided that since tonight we were honoring the newly tenured teachers, I thought I would ask teachers about the best things about working in District 25. Now, I do need to put a disclaimer that I had five and then we had six at the last minute. So I have the top six things, the best things about working in District 25. And this is according to the teachers that I spoke to. I'm sure the list could go on and on and on, but these are the ones that I came up with. So enjoy. Number one, our students and each other. This is coming from teachers. So here are some pictures of our students. I believe these are some friends over at Greenbrier. Number two, top best thing about working in District 25 is our amazing staff and the great families we get to work with. The number three best part of working in District 25 is getting to celebrate each other. This came from one of our schools, I believe it was Westgate. And they tell me that they have monthly meetings and they have monthly birthday breakfasts and energized staff meetings to celebrate and have fun together, build community among staff. And you can see some of the teachers doing just that, having a good time. The number, I've lost track. Number four, the best thing about District 25 is the welcoming creative atmosphere. One school has a building theme of LOL. Not only do they laugh out loud, but they also learn out loud. And they have an interactive bulletin board in their school for both teachers and students to showcase moments of laughter and fun that they can put up on their LOL board, which is a very cool idea. The number five, this was from a newly tenured teacher, actually. The best part of District 25 is the many resources that teachers have available. And I just took a snapshot of just two of the most recent things that teachers have been trained with, building fact fluency and our reading, our literacy footprints toolkits. But we have so many resources in District 25. And the teacher that I was talking to, who's newly tenured, who's actually here tonight, but I won't embarrass her by calling her out by name, said to me that it's awesome to work in District 25 because they treat us like professionals. We have so many resources available to use that the teachers really feel empowered to make choices and to be the professional and make those choices for their students and to reach them in the ways that they need to best reach their students, which is awesome to hear. And the same teacher then said, which is my number six, I said, so what's the best thing about working in District 25? And her exact quote was, so we have so many resources. It's so awesome that we have so many things. And of course, duh, the best part of 25 is Dr. Vine. And so there you are. So these are the top six best things that I got from the teachers that I spoke to about District 25. So thank you. Next week, I will report about the best things about Ivy Hill. Have a good night.
Thank you so much, Allison. That was really, that was very appropriate with tonight's recognition.
Thank you. Quote, duh.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda and I need a motion.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report, an addendum to personnel report. B, invoices. C, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of September 13th, 2022. D, hold closed session minutes of January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022, per board policy. E, hold audio tapes July 1st, 2020 through October 15th, 2020, and November 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, per board policy. F, destruction of audio tapes October 26th, 27th, and 29th, 2022, per board policy.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Call second.
Motion, second. Yes, 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 thank you. Now Lana, if you could call the.
Member Lenichek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead with the student learning portion of the meeting now with a presentation about Summer U and ESY review with Dr. Becky Fitzpatrick.
All right, well, thank you for this opportunity to talk a little bit. Let's go back, let's rewind to when it was nice and warm outside. And we're going to talk a little bit about our summer program. So despite the fact that our regular school year concludes, learning and creativity in our district certainly does not end. We have a number of district programs that we're going to talk about tonight, share a little bit of information about enrollment, some special activities that have happened in those programs. And just as a quick reminder to the board, one of the programs we will talk about is Summer U. I know on a couple of occasions at board meetings, we've talked about the fact that we have used ESAR funding to support registration fees for students in our review classes. We committed to doing that for the last two years. So we would anticipate then this upcoming summer returning back to our usual structure for registration. Where families are paying for classes at Summer U. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn it, we've got three wonderful people here with us this evening. So I'll introduce them each as their section comes up. First up, we have Mrs. Ally Yoder here to talk a little bit about our extended school year or ESY program.
Thank you. So I'm Ally Yoder, the Assistant Principal and Student Services Coordinator over at Westgate. And I have the privilege of serving as the principal for our extended school year program this summer. So just to give you a little information about it, it was housed this summer at Westgate School for the first time. And we provided special education services for 117 students. It was run from June 8th through July 1st. And we used 14 classroom spaces plus therapy offices, such as speech and social work OTPT. Our library was housed for our tech support. We used our gym, our commons, our playground, which the students loved, and our main office. So our early childhood had one of the higher enrollments. And so we had 40 students from early childhood program attend. There were four early childhood classrooms. And within those classrooms, it was staffed with two paraprofessionals or teaching assistants. And we also had staffed a one-on-one nurse for one of our early childhood students. For grades K through 5, as I'm sure you noticed in the pictures for early childhood, as well through K through 5 and our junior high, we had fun at ESY this summer with different themed days and different activities. We had 67 students kindergarten through fifth grade. That was eight classrooms staffed with additional teaching assistants as well for support. And then our middle school was our smallest enrollment. We had 10 students. We had one classroom with three pair of teaching assistants. And as you can see through the pictures, no matter how old you were, we had a great time. So our, there was no better picture on an expense page than this little cutie looking through. So when we want to talk about our numbers, our total expenditures were $148,503 and some change.
And just as a reminder to the board, extended school year is a program offered to all stu, not, I shouldn't say all students, but it's offered to students who have individualized or educational programs or IEPs. The team that works with those children determines whether that child might be eligible for those extended school year services, mostly based on a determination of whether they believe there might be significant, you know, regression during the summer. And they would benefit greatly from participating in that extended school year program. Next up, we have Mr. Dana Berry, who's here to talk a little bit about our summer band program.
Thank you. I'm, like mentioned, I'm Dana Berry. And we've had our summer band program again last summer. It's been going on for decades. And it was at Thomas. And it's always a couple of weeks before the school year starts. This year, it was the last week of July and the first week of August. It's two weeks long. We had 139 students enrolled in incoming grades 6 through 8 to Thomas or South, which is about 40% of our entire band program. The perks of the summer band program, just a couple of them. It really helps the sixth graders that are just coming into Thomas or South. They, their minds are going 100 miles an hour. They're wondering what middle school is going to be like. And by that first day of school, they've already spent two weeks in the building doing something fun, making new friends, getting to know each other and the school a little bit. And it's also good for the seventh and eighth graders because it gets them playing their instruments again before the school year starts. We have a concert at the end. And Mr. Scapalato was kind enough to come to our concert this summer. And so the parents really enjoy that. They get to see their kids perform. The tuition that the children pay for summer band is $60 a person. That covers all of the expenses. It's completely self-funded. It always has been. And, yeah, that's our summer band program.
A lot of credit goes out to our band teachers who really do a lot, not only to, you know, interact with our students during that time, but the organization of it. And I don't think you can underestimate that 40% of students that are in band choosing, these are middle school students, over the summer, choosing to participate in this program. I think speaks pretty highly to the experience and the fun that they have working together. So thank you, Mr. Berry, and to your colleagues as well. And finally, tonight, we're, we have Mr. Nick Filipowski here to talk to us about Summer U.
Nick Filipowski, associate principal over at Thomas Middle School and then have had the pleasure to serve as the principal for Summer U for, I forget how many summers. I think four or five now. One weird one in the middle there. This year, we were back at our usual home camp. This year, we were back at our usual home campus at South Middle School and followed the same calendar as E S Y, from June 8th to July 1st. So we had both review classes, and then we had a lot more this year enrichment courses that were offered. So these are teacher-created courses where we just kind of open it up to their creativity and curiosity that they want to lead the students through. And so those were all for students that have finished kindergarten or through seventh grade and are entering first through eighth in our district. So this year, we had 586 students that attended Summer U, and we had 37 teachers and then two teaching assistants that assisted various students throughout the morning. This year, 21 sections of review classes, and then also seven enrichment courses. So while that looks like seven, that's typically then 14 sections because they typically have a morning one session as well as a morning two session, so kind of doubling up the number of students that get to participate. And then this year, our M L classrooms, we had 10 sections of M Ls. So you can see the breakdown of funding there, you know, with ESER funding as well. That certainly offsets what we would typically see as a much larger revenue in tuition, which is why you see kind of for Summer U, a smaller number there, but leaving us with a balance of $29,565 and change.
And when Nick talks about those M L courses, those are our multilingual learners. We use grant funding to be able to support the registration and transportation for all students that participate in those courses.
And that structure will maintain. So that is something where I feel like just to help, that we've always used our lip lap grant funds to help with that program, kind of in an E S Y kind of style, right? Students that need that extra support. So while as we may return without ESER funding for our tuition-based classes, the M L, I think our intention is to continue to use those lip lap funds for that program.
And if I'm not mistaken, I do believe we have one of our enrichment teachers in the audience around the world.
Around the world. Yeah, around the world.
Around the world. I can't even tell you. I may have taught at that school.
And one of our most popular to date.
It is, right.
There's always a long, long waiting list.
That's also something somewhat unique to our Summer U program. Some other districts have review programs, specialized programs, there are special education programs. Not every district goes on to then offer those enrichment classes, so we're really proud of that. And because we can't wait, a little preview for Summer 2023. We'll have Summer U, so everybody take note, plan your vacations accordingly. June 12th to June 30th, E S Y will run during those same dates. Camp Invention is not an actual district program, but run by a district staff member. It's a STEM-based program for our students to participate in. That's offered July 10th to July 14th. And then Summer Band, which is really, as Mr. Berry spoke about, is really kind of a gear-up program, so that'll be July 24th through August 3rd. And that's our update of summer programs. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I have some comments, but I'm going to wait till my colleagues chime in. Thank you so much for that report.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I just wanted to highlight, I did get to attend that summer band concert, and many programs have summer band concerts and all this, but what a gem. I mean, the energy in the room was amazing, and to hear that it's 40% of your program, what a participation rate. I had one question for you, Mr. Berry. I learned that night that some, you have faculty that come in. If you could just share a little bit about that and what that does for the kids when you bring them in?
Yes, we bring in sectional teachers, experts on their instruments to help with the small group instruction piece. They're all vetted. The advantage of that is on the children. They get, they get band rehearsal every day, and they get two lessons a week. And we can have several different lessons going on at the same time because we have all these different specialists that come in. This year, we had nine.
Thank you.
Madam President, just a quick question, and one that I sound like a broken record on, but we had 10% of the student body attend this particular session. We have, you know, obviously tax dollars that are paying for the bulk of the class. What's the, the outcome? What, how do we know that the money was well-spent? How do we judge that particular investment? Where will we see it?
We, we have the ability to look at that return on investment. We look to share that information, I think, with the board at an upcoming meeting. I think in terms of the, that expenditure, at this point in time, I think with the board's commitment, we've made a decision to fund that in that way through ESER funds through this past summer. We did see a slight decline in enrollment in those review classes. I think to capture it best, things opened up, so our students had a lot of other opportunities to participate in, so the enrollment wasn't as significant during this past summer. So unless, you know, a different decision is made, we would look to return to our original structure. But we can certainly provide additional updates on kind of that return on investment.
So again, kind of to piggyback on what Becky said, you'll see that in the assessment report, I believe at the November meeting. And in terms of funding, just a reminder, all of the multilingual courses, transportation are funded through that federal grant. This year, we did use ESER funds to pay for those review classes. All of the enrichment classes are tuition-based. And prior than the, prior to the last two years with the ESER funds, all of those courses, enrichment and support classes were tuition-based. Go ahead, Greg. I see you have a follow-up.
I think I have a follow-up. So, and to build on some information you shared with us prior to the meeting, Dr. Vine, is, you know, starting next year, there would be tuition-based, the academic review, but that we did see an increase in enrollment because maybe, or we could hypothesize that it was because there was no fee involved. So I know I would be interested in seeing then, or having a discussion at a later date, you know, if, if it was feasible for the district to support that, to continue tuition-free and opportunity for academic review, or at least to have that discussion here. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that.
Okay, maybe we can put that as a future, maybe.
Just one clarifying comment. I thought we, I heard you said it was up, and I heard it was, enrollment was down.
So.
Just want to clarify what I'm hearing, sorry.
So it's kind of both. Yeah. So we've had two, we have had two years of free enrichment support classes. In the first year, correct me if I'm wrong, we saw a pretty significant spike in students enrolling in that. It went down some the second year, but it's still higher than a typical year.
Sorry, I was just making sure. I heard up and I heard down. I was like, wait, it's down from the previous year because of more open.
But still higher than a typical year when parents pay for it. So I'll fall, I'll add on and have a follow-up question to what my colleagues had asked. So Dr. Fitzpatrick, you had said, you know, that there was a decline in enrollment in the review classes, right? Could you kind of go over what the outreach, how do students find out about these classes? And how they kind of, how do they sign up?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Am I stepping on your toes? I was just about to say, yeah, Mr. Filipowski does quite a bit of outreach, P R regarding it. I'll just add to it that certainly our teachers are aware of the programs that are available, so they're sometimes having conversations with families, making suggestions that a student might benefit from those programs. But I'll let Nick speak to kind of his efforts on P R.
Sure. So for the various programs for our M L students, we always reach out to our M L resource teachers at every building. Typically around that spring conference time, they'll actually even give signup sheets to those families directly because we want to really offer that support. As far as the general review classes and enrichment classes, we do newsletter blasts through all of our schools. So those weekly communications that principals send home, we'll start advertising typically February beginning is when we put out our course catalog for that coming year. And then typically, beginning of March is when that registration opens. One thing that I hope to highlight more and more for our community is that we always have wait lists at the beginning of that registration period, and it's okay because as in typical past years, we try to be self-funded as well through tuition. So that wait list just informs me how many teachers to hire at the beginning, which is something that we've tried to streamline more and more and try to educate on, that we will continue to try and do a better job too of that, so that people don't think that it's closed. Because typically, I am able to get everybody off of a wait list, so.
No, thanks so much, Nick. It's so funny, registration is like, it's like nine by 9:03, there's like a mad dash of moms, including myself, trying to register kids because there's such, Summer U, I mean, it is such a gem in our community with our incredible District 25 educators teaching these classes. So it's like, don't miss opportunity kind of thing. But the variety of classes offered, it's incredible. I'll say from a mom perspective, my son took the coding class, and when you were talking about Summer U is all about sparking creativity and curiosity. He's still coding independently now, so job well done. And then, yeah, so Around the World sounds like a great class, and all the classes. So incredible. And, you know, as a board member and parent, when I come to Summer U, the, just, everybody's there, it's summertime, but all the kids are so excited, lined up, ready to go in, and there's just so much energy around the field, and it's so fun to be, and it was so neat to be in person. So thank you. Thank you so much for all your hard work, for all of you.
I have to apologize to Dr. Vine. I'm sitting here reflecting, and you were at that summer band concert also, so thank you for your support.
My pleasure.
And then my two colleagues that taught with me were Carolyn Schneider from South and Caitlin Pucci from Thomas. So we needed all three of us.
I love the plug. We have to make sure we put it in our calendars, we'll be there next time to all of us. Thank you. We'll move on to Student Services with Ms. Diane Kafka.
Thank you for inviting me here tonight to talk about our LEA determination. Let me get through this. There we go. So the LEA determination, it's required. I D E A, or Individuals with Disabilities Act, require all the states to go through some of the criteria for every school district and issue a report annually on how we're doing, how we're doing on our criteria for many different factors. And I'll kind of go through all of that. So ISBE has done the report for this year, and the exciting news is District 25 meets all requirements. So just to get into kind of what that looks like for you, is this next slide. I know there's a lot of information on here, so I'm just going to kind of summarize what that is. There's a point in time, December 1st child count, when ISBE goes through all of our reporting and reports on these different indicators or factors for District 25. The school districts can score a zero, one, two, or three, and three being the highest. So three is we're either meeting and exceeding those state targets. If it was a two, that means we're below the state target but improved from last year. A score of one is we're below the state target, but we remain constant. Or a score of zero is we're below the state target and we've actually declined. As you can see, we are threes all the way straight down the line, which is wonderful. Just a little bit about what, what each indicator means. Indicator 6A, that's the Early Childhood Service Delivery, and that measures the percentage of early childhood students that receive the majority of their special education in the regular early childhood class. And as you can see, we are a three this year. This was one indicator that we were a little lower in last year. And I know we explained that at the board meeting last year, that it was really due to that point in time during the pandemic, when we had so many guidances we had to take care of with our little ones, that six-foot guidance was really hard with three-year-olds. So we did have a little decrease in enrollment for that one year, but as your early childhood that time, I knew we were going to be right back up to the three for this year. The indicator 12 is another early childhood outcome, and that measures if the students that were eligible in early intervention, if your early childhood coordinator and team made sure that they had a smooth transition. And again, we had 100% of all those, so we had a score of three for that. Indicator 5A is the least restrictive environment, and that measures the percentage of students grades K through eight that are supported within general education for 80% or more of their day. And as you can see, we scored a three on that one, too. A few other ones are just meeting the criteria that they set. So things like the suspension and expulsion, that just indicates that we have no discrepancy by rate, race, or ethnicity in regards to our rate of suspensions or expulsions. Same with that disproportionality of I E Ps, that we don't have any disproportionate representative of race or ethnic groups. And same with indicator 10, disproportionality, we don't have any specific disability category that's misrepresented overall. So we've met all of those across the board. The Child Find reports that we have met all of our guidelines as a district. We have 60 days to complete evaluations, and we've met all of that. And then those other two, the timely, timely correction of noncompliance and fiscal outcomes, we've met all of those. So overall, we are a score of 27 out of 27, which is 100%. So we meet all requirements, and any ISBE supports that we want, we can voluntarily use. So overall, I kind of just said that. Our secret is, we've met all of it, just scored 27 out of 27, 100%. Any questions regarding that?
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for my colleagues? I think.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job on the LEA. We're moving on to Business and Finance, and this is an action item. I need a motion, please.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2022-2023 budget as presented.
Thank you, Greg. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Stacy, thank you, Stacy.
Yeah, in your packet, you just have changes that were made to the final budget from what was presented at the August meeting. The majority of changes, a lot of the, on the revenue side, are related to grant allocations because we find those out once we submit our final claims as of June 30th, as well as what ultimately our allocations will be with the carryover. And then the other biggest, two other big changes on the revenue side, CPPRT was double last year, what we typically see. And a lot of my colleagues and I were not anticipating that that would continue, and the state of Illinois actually puts those projections out there for us. They weren't available at the time of the tentative budget, but have since been put out, and they are still going to remain at that higher level. So I did increase the budget based on that Illinois Department of Revenue estimate for that. And then in the bonds, I had included in the tentative budget, the $60 million of bond proceeds going to working cash, because that's historically where bond proceeds have gone. But learned that because these are referendum bonds, they actually go directly into capital projects, so we don't have to go through all the transferring back and forth, as well as, pardon? As well as splitting them out because they were sold at a premium. I do have to book the premium separate from the par amount, so it's split out that way. And then on the expense side, we are going to see a reduction in our I M R F employer rate was released recently as of January 1st, so I made those adjustments in the budget. Couple of reclassifications or adjustments between department budgets, school budgets, as well as the grant, offsetting grant expenditures, slight reduction in what I had originally anticipated for our special ed out of district tuition based on our actual. tuition, based on our actual student enrollments and a number of kids who have since moved out of the district, or a handful, a couple of kids replaced by other kids. And then the biggest piece there was the debt service on the new bonds. There will be an interest payment due on those bonds as of June 1st of '23, so I had to include that in this new budget. It's important to note that there's no property tax revenue included in this budget for these bonds, because that tax levy will go on the '22. The tax levy will do this December. The fall collection this year, which is part of the current year budget, is the second half of the '21 tax levy. The spring collection of '23 will be based on 55% of the 2021 levy, which didn't include any bonds. So the whole portion of the bonds will be built in the second installment, which would be next fall or part of the '23-'24 budget. However, the spring collection, even though there really is no dollars from the referendum bonds, still gets allocated on the '22 rates, and those rates will reflect the bonds. So it'll look like, basically, we'll take part of that money and put it in debt service to offset based on the rates. It's kind of messy, but it's how it works. So there's additional payments on the expense side, but no additional revenue, just shifting a portion of that revenue in the spring to the debt service fund. And then in the fall, when we actually get those dollars, whatever was shifted to debt service in the spring will get shifted back to ed fund in the fall, if that makes sense.
Thank you so much, Stacy. Any questions, comments for my colleagues? No questions. So we'll take this to a vote. Lana, please.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
And as I've noted before, my concern is that budgets don't reflect us making progress toward what do we do after five years, so it's a no.
Rich. So, yeah, we're, we're going to go on to the employee benefits renewal, and this is an action item as well, so I need a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution for continuation of various insurance coverages for the 2023 calendar year with the changes as presented.
Thank you, Greg. A second, please. Thank you, Rich. And Stacy, again, thank you.
The Insurance Committee received the renewal back on September 13th. We've been lucky the last couple of years in seeing a single-digit increase in our medical insurance rates, but whatever the facts have caught up with us, whether it's COVID-related delay procedures, whatever it might be, we were facing 11.2% renewal this year. As the Board is aware, we have a negotiated 6% cap that the Board will pick up no more than a 6% increase. So the remainder of that increase then gets shifted to the employees. We did consider some plan changes. However, the savings that would come from making the plan changes don't offset the cost to the individual employees. The increases in deductible, et cetera, weren't truly offset by the reduction in premium. And looking at the number of people who it would impact, we've decided to move forward with this renewal for this year and look at better communicating with our staffs, better marketing to our staff on ways that they can help try to save dollars in the insurance plan. The largest portion of that increase really at this point is coming from our pharmaceutical usage and the specialty drugs, which my understanding is those, when somebody's on a specialty drug, it's because there's not an alternative that their doctor feels is going to work for them. And those drugs can cost tens of thousands of dollars per prescription. Again, we have that information, and we'll work together as a committee to try to inform and educate our staff on things they maybe should be asking their doctors or working towards to try to look at lower-cost alternatives to the extent that they can. Our vision insurance, we did go out to bid for, that plan was up for renewal, and we had other carriers that declined to offer proposals, or they just weren't competitive. So we're looking at recommending to stay with the same insurance provider. They did provide a two-year rate guarantee with a slight increase. Vision insurance costs the Board about $76 per employee that accesses it per year. Dental insurance, there's no increase on our dental PPO plan and a 6% increase on the DHMO plan. The Board pays for the single dental premium. Any cost above and beyond that, the employee pays for. And it costs about, it costs $42.49 is the premium per month for the single coverage. Life insurance, we had made a change three years ago and gotten a big credit from the company that we went with. Unfortunately, my department, it's been kind of an administrative nightmare working with this new provider in trying to have them keep up with reconciling our bills in terms of people who come off the plan, go on the plan. We have had a lot of turnover. We have had a lot of mid-year hires, ironically, these last couple of years with COVID, what have you. We did a lot of our own self-billing and reconciling on behalf of them. So we were seeking to make a change and did get a quote from Lincoln Financial, who we have checked some references on, that they are able to provide accurate billing. And actually, the cost will be slightly lower by 18 cents per month per covered employee with a two-year rate guarantee as well. And life insurance is a benefit that the Board does provide to all full-time employees.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments from the Board? Seeing none. We will move on to the Administrator. Oh, we're going to take a vote. Yes, it was an action item. Thank you. Lana, if you could call the vote.
Dr. Jogi?
Yes.
Sorry. Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to the Administrator Compensation Report, the Public Act 960434. Smalek?
I apologize, I'm looking at the agenda, and it says it will be uploaded.
A report that by law must be posted on our website by October 1st. And so we typically will bring it to the Board so that you see it before that, but we can send it to you tomorrow, and it's still prepared and ready to be posted on the website. Stacy, do you want to talk a little bit about what's different about this one and the next one?
Yeah, so there was, there were two laws passed. The first one was just on the Administrator's Compensation, where specific information was required to be put together and posted on the district website by October 1st each year. In terms of total compensation for the current school year going forward. Then shortly thereafter, within a couple of years, a new law was passed requiring that districts post both Administrator and Teacher Salary and Compensation Reports with the same information for administrators, but also then adding on all the teachers. Unfortunately, they never pulled back the other requirement, so we post both reports. However, the Administrator/Teacher Salary Benefit Reports, which is a ISBE document that the Personnel Department puts the data into, it's retroactive, so it's the prior year data. So whatever value that's providing to whoever legislated those requirements, that is the difference between the two reports, but they are required every year to be presented to the Board and then put on the website by October 1st.
Say that, so you basically have one of the reports here in front of you. The other one is similar, although shorter, because it's just administrators, and it's the coming year as opposed to the past year. But both of these reports go on the website, are publicly available.
Okay, thank you. And that was the information items, so thank you for that information. Any questions, comments? We're good to go. Moving on to Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefit.
She just kind of covered that one at the same time.
You did, sorry. Yes, let's move on. Thank you, Stacy.
As we move forward in the agenda, the next item, I would ask the Board, we'd like to strike that from tonight's agenda, that's under Personnel and Planning, and then suggest that we move on to item 15.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Byen. If you could move on to that item 15 Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you. The first one, 15A, is the Freedom of Information Act report that we provide to the Board at every meeting. It lists the requests that we've received under that law and the date that a response was provided. Then I'll move on to letter B, which is going to be more of a presentation, not just from me, but from my colleagues as well. But we wanted to highlight for the Board, kind of the focus for each of our departments for this year. There are dozens and dozens of things that each of our department has leads each year, but these are items that will get special attention and focus this year. I'll just read, I know you have a list of these, I'll just read a couple of them for you. So in the Department of Student Learning, Dr. Fitzpatrick, of course, will be working to develop our kindergarten instructional program this year. She's also going to be embarking on a process to review our advanced learning programs throughout the district. In the area of Department of Student Services, as you are aware, Mrs. Kafka will be working with NSSO. They'll be doing an audit of all of our special services programs. That includes surveys and questions for families, for staff, lots of data collection, and NSSO will be reporting out on that to the Board throughout the year. Also, McKinney-Vento supports. McKinney-Vento is the Homeless Support Act, and Diane Kafka is in charge of that. And the supports that are available, Diane is in charge of organizing those, both at a district level. There are statewide supports, there are regional supports, and it's her charge and interest in making sure that all families and students that need that support understand all the different places and programs that they could benefit from. Under Dr. Kay's leadership, he is working with our new Director of Equity to really integrate and expand on that role. And as we come out of COVID and get back to our typical professional staff evaluation process during COVID, the State Board of Education waived the requirement of evaluations for certified staff. And now that we're back in a regular year, those are back in place, and it's his job to make sure that all of our staff understand that process in detail, both from the evaluator perspective and the evaluator perspective. There's also been some changes in the law and the amount of times that certified staff are evaluated. So he's been very busy making sure everybody understands that process so we can have real beneficial conversations. In our Business and Finance, Stacy will be working hard to utilize the funds through the referendum to provide our construction and our full-day kindergarten programming, and also doing those five-year forecasts, especially including some capital projects, funding ideas for the long term that the Board has asked us to include for the future. Our new Director of Food and Nutrition Services, you know, for the past couple of years, lunch services have been very different during COVID. For a year or so, it was free for everybody, all students. For a couple of years, we were outside providing bags of food and delivering them to homes during the pandemic. So we're back to what had been a more typical experience for the Food and Nutrition Services Department pre-pandemic, but we all need retraining on how that works and communications. She's already done an amazing job updating information on menu items and nutrition aspects that families can access. And in fact, if we ever change items, they get the live updates right away. So she's been doing a great job. And in facilities, of course, we have six construction projects that are going to be starting soon, and so Mr. Schultz is very busy with that. Also, every three years, you have an asbestos reinspection, and he'll be involved in that as well. And then in my office, of course, really getting our strategic plan to the implementation phase, the safety and security audit that we're doing this year, as well as supporting my colleagues in the construction and kindergarten development. And in Mr. Harris's department, as you've seen, he's transitioned our website to a whole new system and is continuing to go through a third and a fourth time through every page on that, just to make sure everything is updated. He's looking to start a kind of a construction blog, beginning in the spring of 2023. Those that were on the Board when we did our previous construction projects, you might remember, he did some really great work with a drone, which he could do some videos and put out to families to show them what was happening when we couldn't go into the construction areas on our own. So those are some of the main areas, in addition to their typical, very busy jobs, that each of our administrators will be putting some extra focus in this year. And related to that, Becky Fitzpatrick's going to come up and help us. When we did the last strategic plan, one of the things that we got a lot of accolades on from the state and a lot of comments on from our families was a dashboard that we put together that families and Boards and anybody in the community could see at any time, to see what we were actually doing, kind of what those objectives and strategies are, and to see what percentage of our plan was completed in each of the goal areas. So we're hoping to go live with this dashboard in early October and keep it live through the end of the strategic plan in 2025. Becky really kind of facilitated a process for all of our administrators to work together to get this going, and Adam Harris kind of took it and put it into the system that you're about to see. So Becky's just going to give you a high-level kind of intro to it, and we, of course, will make you and our community aware as soon as it's live, and people can go through in as great a detail as they'd like to over the next handful of years. Becky?
Yeah, so with some assistance from Adam, who I think is going to navigate for me. As Lori mentioned, the Strategic Dashboard is a platform for us to share our strategic plan and keep the Board and community members aware of our progress, including evaluating the impact and return on investment that strategic goals are having on students, families and community, learning, staffing, and financial outcomes. The dashboard is really indicated, or divided up into three separate sections. Right now, you're looking at the homepage, which is really the landing page that tells our district's story. All of this information looks pretty familiar. It was generated by our strategic plan action teams, and it really kind of orients a user to the dashboard. Then moving over to the Indicators tab, the Indicators tab houses tiles, which contains both quantitative and qualitative information or data, which we'll use to kind of monitor the impact of our strategic goals. And as we build this out, for some tiles, you'll be able to see additional details in historical data to explain the indicator by clicking on the information icon. So one example, Adam's already taken us there. You might have noticed the original tile was a number for our total enrollment. Hitting on the information button, it takes you to a more detailed historical look at what our enrollment has looked like dating back to 2013. And if you go back to the Indicators page, scroll down a little bit more. An example from Student Achievement, if you go over to, yeah, right there. if you go over to, yeah, right there, that's indicating that 65% of our eighth-grade students participate in Algebra I prior to graduating onto District 214 or other schools. Other tiles may include comparisons of our district performance to national and state benchmarks. So as Lori mentioned, this will go live in early October, so we populated it and will continue to add more information. Then heading over to the Strategies tab, this outlines the strategies or levers that we will employ to make progress toward our overall goals and related objectives. So Adam, if you head to the Learning Environment section, which you're at right now, thank you, you'll see that, so the overall goal in Learning Environment is that NSSEO will conduct an audit of District 25's programming for special education, starting in the fall of 2022. And you can see, before you click into those, if you close it back up, just as it's noted, you can see in the kind of gold circle, it's indicating 0% to indicate overall in that objective, no progress has been made. I think Diane just even, we've talked earlier about the fact that we'll be starting that audit this fall. If you then click on that objective, you're now looking at these strategies or those levers that we believe will help us make progress towards that objective. The gold overall percentage is just an average of all the other percentage completed for those strategies. So on the left-hand side, you'll see those are all currently zero. As the year moves on, you'll see those will move over. Again, it's not noting any sort of performance or growth, that's really just the percentage completed of that work. Let's see, one of those, we already talked about. And again, for some strategies, you'll be able to access that additional details by clicking on the information icon. And so we have those for all the different goal areas. So the dashboard itself will be located on the Strategic Plan section of our website, and again, launched in early October. We plan to update it quarterly in alignment with the middle school reporting cards going home. And as noted on the homepage, we're proud of this work and excited about the progress the district will make throughout this plan, so we're excited to have a way to more visually and on a regular basis, share our progress in those areas.
Thank you, Becky. Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Rich.
The indicators seem very similar to the Illinois School Report Card information. So how does that differ, or will information be, because here you just mentioned quarterly, so are like student achievement going to be updated quarterly, or how is that really, what is, how is this different from what's available already?
So I can jump in. So the District 25 by the numbers, that's Illinois School Report Card. Yeah, that's general demographic data. But for all of the goal areas below, those are not, some might be related to school report cards, others are related to the goals that we've set through the strategic plan. So some are individualized for District 25. Some things are things like, there's some probably here on stewardship of resources that might be similar to school report card. And we can always add to these tiles as we go throughout the school years.
You know, again, many of them are very, are actually the same measure, looking at it. But either way, I just want to understand how they're going to be updated. But you talk about goals, which is always good, if you could scroll up a little bit, if you don't mind. So I guess, keep going, sorry, student achievement may be one. So here, when we're looking at high school advanced placement enrollment, 40%, well, what's the goal, right? And this is something I keep bringing up, is great, 40%, but if it was 50% last year, that's bad. If it was, you know, 20% last year, this is great. I have no barometer to really say what that is against. Not that we're doing a bad job, but I don't know, you know, especially if I'm coming here, it's a great site to come to. If you're outside of the district, oh, this is great. But what's the barometer? Well, you know, how do I rationalize this information?
Yeah, I think more of that information will come when we add some of that historical information. When you click on those tiles, you'll be able to see what kind of progress has been made in terms of, and our goal really is to increase the number of students that are participating in those programs.
And that would be-
Sorry, they showed you like an example in the enrollment that showed the enrollment history. Each of these tiles, as we get them further built, you'll be able to click on and see some years' progressions.
What would be helpful and maybe more standard in industry, I mean, not education, but really those goals then, either reflective or they're indicative right away, you're trending up, you're trending down, you have a checkmark, you're meeting your goal, you're not meeting, color designation, so that I don't, as a user, I don't have to click and then click, click to follow more information. I can quickly get, again, the intent of this being a scorecard or something that you can immediately see, you can immediately go through and say, hey, I'm doing, I'm blowing out of the water, I'm not doing well in those areas, and then drill in if you want more information.
Yeah, thank you. We can definitely look at something, again, we're giving you the baseline of the next four years. As, in fact, if you were on those strategy pages, you would see a lot of those say 0% completion because we're starting with our baseline, and then each year we'll add to that, but we can consider that as well. Thank you.
And if I could just address the updating of the goals, I think you also asked a question about that. I think it really kind of depends on the metrics. So obviously, student achievement data will be updated after each of our testing windows. Other information, despite the fact that we'll get in and take a look at it, might only be updated on a yearly basis.
So when is the targeted go-live date for this? I know you said October, but obviously, just so we understand. And then how will this be communicated to the community? Because obviously, that's something important, because once we have these available, I would assume, you know, like Rich is saying, people are going to have to want to go look, see. So, and then as updates are made, I'm assuming, like you said, quarterly, or will that also be somehow scheduled out for the people can be aware of it?
Yeah, we did find that our last strategic planning dashboard that we had was heavily visited by our community, so we would expect this one as well. So we'll put it out in all of our school newsletters, our district newsletters, et cetera.
Madam President?
Gina?
So a suggestion might be like, next to student achievement, put the frequency of the update so that people know when to expect it versus coming in with questions or calling or putting unnecessary burden on answering questions to the team. Chad, I like that idea, or last updated.
I do want to say, though, I'm excited to see this, right? I mean, I know we're, I know it's hard when we're sitting here asking questions, and I know you're just giving us a dry run. So I'm excited to see it, and I'm excited to see more of this, that we can have an actual click-through and see what it looks like. I'm sure we'll have more comments at that point in time, but I think it's a great start.
No, thanks to my colleagues. And this is where the diversity of thought comes in and kind of seeing things from different perspectives. So thank you so much for the hard work and getting the, you know, the dashboard, you know, it's going to get running soon, because that accountability to our goal areas and just that transparency, the level of transparency that you're proposing is really good, and it's important for our community to keep seeing. So thank you for continuing to incorporate the input that's coming through on this. Thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
One more question on here. I don't know if this can be added. Can anything about the full-day kindergarten? I know, like, where the strategy, I mean, is that going to be on here? I mean, it's not a part of our strategic plan, but I feel like it was a big part of our next five-year investments, so I think it would be something that we would want to, like, hey, where we're at in the development or something of that, just so we're aware.
But we can build an indicator tile as well.
Certainly agreed. We would, yeah, assume that the addition of full-day kindergarten will result in a higher rate of student achievement.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Fitzpatrick. We will now move on to the second reading of policies for press 108, and this is an action item. I need a motion, please.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. I need a second. Thank you, Rich. And, and me-
I'll just share any update from the last meeting. So in this section, press 108, the only policy that has additional information on it is 4:165, which is Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors. And you'll remember, the board asked us to define on here grooming behaviors. So I have listed that. It's actually a reference on the policy in Section 1125 of the Illinois School Code. So when the policy, I should have thought about that last time, has all the legal references, often those reflect directly to definitions. So I have listed that definition here for the board. My recommendation would be that you don't, we don't add it on the actual policy since the reference is there.
I would agree. I mean, based on how you put it, I think that's fine with a web link like that.
That was the only additional info that we added.
And then there's a point of reference. So at the last board meeting, or two board meetings ago, I asked that the code of conduct be placed onto the board agenda. So just, I know I got some weird looks from folks at the time, but this is in reference. So in Policy 7240, there's a reference to the code of conduct for participants in extracurricular activities. That's what needs to be presented to the board for review as well. So that's just in that policy. We haven't had it, and it's just something that makes sure that we review it at that point.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Nobody was looking at you, Rich.
I mean, that was normal.
No, 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 we like to look at you when you're talking, or each of our colleagues were just doing the eye contact thing. Thanks, Rich. I was just joking here. Are there any other questions, comments? No? Okay, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sriniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the second reading of policies, press 109, and this is an action item as well. Could I get a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Chad.
So there's also one policy in press 109 that we've added information to after the board's discussion. That's Policy: 2110, Qualifications, Term, and Duties of Board Officers. You may remember, we talked about the length of Board Officer elections, moving those from one year to two years. So we did get some additional information based on board questions. So for you, to help you make a decision on this one, there is no mechanism for removing a board member from their position as a board officer during the time of their term once elected. So if you're elected as secretary for one year, there's no mechanism to removing you from that office, or if you're elected for two years. Again, there is no mechanism to vote someone off of a position that you voted them into in terms of an officer. As a side note, kind of related, if an officer resigns from a position as officer, that office stays vacant until the board revotes to fill it. For example, if a board president resigned their office as board president, the board has to vote to fill that vacancy. The vice president fills it until that vacancy is filled, but they're not automatically, they don't automatically become president. And the same if office of vice president or secretary, if someone vacates that voluntarily, then the board, that stays vacant until the board votes for a new person to fill that role. But otherwise, any of those positions, president, vice president, secretary, even recording secretary that Mrs. O'Brien does for the board, the, there's, once someone is voted by the board to those officer positions, there's no way to remove them from those positions until the next time that an election for those positions is done.
So this is one where, in our discussions, we talked about how, you know, should we go to two years or to one year? And really, traditionally, we've done one year for a very long time. And I personally think it suits us well to have one year, so I don't see any reason to switch to two years for that matter.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, if we want to keep the incumbents, there's no harm in having to vote one more time in a calendar year as opposed to just automatically making it two, just because that was a recommendation. So I would be inclined to just stay with the one.
And, Dr. Byrne, could you remind us, like, initially, why did we put this on, as far as why were we looking at this, I know, surrounding boards?
Yeah, so as this policy was up for renewal, I made the suggestion that the board align with IASB's best practice as well as Illinois School Code. Illinois School Code actually says for a two, no more than a two-year term, the vast, vast majority of school districts and IASB would recommend do that two-year term. But as Rich mentioned, we've looked back and back into the 1970s, who knows why, District 25, changed that to be a one-year term in District 25. So it just can't be any more than two. So currently, the board policy is one year. You would have to vote on this policy to change it to two, or you'd need to amend the recommendation to say, approve the policies except for 2:110.
And I'll add, as far as effective board governance goes, it's, my understanding and my research is that it's important for sustainability and succession of leadership that, you know, that when you have the two years, the first year may be kind of a learning curve, and the second year, that to continue with the transition and kind of smooth transition of leadership, that was part of that, too.
That's why the Illinois Association of School Board recommends it as a best practice, so you have some consistent leadership, at least for a two-year period.
For consistency's sake.
Madam President, it also bears worth repeating that if we were to change the policy to two years, that it wouldn't take effect until the next seating of the board in April.
So it's not in effect now? It would be after the next voting?
Madam President?
Any other, yes, Gina?
So looking at this and thinking through, like, it would have to be concurrent with the election years because of the shifts, it doesn't take us that long to cast a vote on an annual basis. So I agree with Brian and Rich. I don't think there's a need to change this at this time.
Okay.
I'm aligned, because I think I mentioned that before, the last time we talked. I don't think we need to change it from my perspective, but I just wanted to understand the process, and that's why I asked those questions. So I would align to say, let's just keep it as one for now. I mean, I think it just makes sense. As you said, it's one night in April, we take five minutes out of the timeframe, we do the process, and we move on.
Okay, good input from everybody. Thank you. So we'll take that to a-
You could either vote as it is, right? And people would vote either to yes, approve all of these policies, or no, not to approve the policies. Or you can amend, somebody can amend the recommendation to approve the policies except for 2:110.
Madam President, I move that we approve all of the policies except for 2:110 at this time.
Okay, thank you. Lana, if you could call the vote. Yeah, Rich seconded, yep.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sriniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yeah, I'll say for the reasons of sticking to effective board governance, I'm going to take a vote no on this, as far as the, the amended motion.
I'm sorry. Then maybe I misunderstood the motion. Could you repeat the motion?
Sure.
Some, I don't know who.
So Gina moves to approve all of the policies except two colon one ten at this time.
So two colon one, we will not have a separate motion to?
Not today.
We would need a separate motion. Okay. I'm just making sure I understood it.
Yeah, I'm wondering if I, I believe, so if I'm, go ahead.
So I was gonna say, there's a couple ways we could have done this, right? We could have taken action on the original motion, and people could have voted no.
Right.
On updating all policies. And then someone could say, I'd like to make another motion where we approve all policies except two colon one ten. And so we kind of did that at the same time. Where Gina updated the, amended the motion before it was voted on, saying, I'd like to recommend that we approve the policies except for two colon one ten. So everything in front of you for one oh nine has been approved, except two one ten will not change.
Right. And if I wanted it to change, then my vote stands as no.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Do you?
So.
So she voted no because she wanted, she had hoped that two colon one ten had been included.
Okay.
Do you want to change your vote?
Yeah, I just, the way I understand the motion is, I just voted yes for all the policies, and I didn't vote anything on two colon one four zero.
Two colon one ten?
One ten, excuse me. Do you follow? And that's why, I'm not trying to question you.
Do you want to make a separate motion on two colon one ten? I mean, I'm just, I'm genuinely, for clarification. It can, okay? So you want to do that now? We could do that now?
Yes, I will make that motion now. So, Madam President, I move that we approve the policy.
Two colon one ten?
Two colon one ten as presented.
Okay, I need a second.
You can second it if you want.
I'll second it. I'm seconding it, Misha.
Okay. And then Lana would need to call the vote on that one, in any order, Lana.
Member Olenichak?
No.
Member Sriniglia?
No.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
No.
Member Faso?
No.
Member Conley?
No.
Okay, thank you. That does not pass.
Right.
Thank you. A great discussion. Thank you for everybody's input. Okay, we will move on to, I believe, section E, correct? Second reading of policies, section two, Board of Education, general review, action item, please.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you. A second, please. Thank you, Rich.
Okay, there's also one policy in this section that has new information. That is policy two colon two twenty, Board of Education Meeting Procedure. So in response to the question from the last meeting, we were talking about how long would, do we need to keep video recordings of these meetings now that we're doing this? And there's kind of two answers. If the meeting was held remotely under the authority of the executive order, so during the executive order, when the governor said school boards may meet remotely and should, therefore must videotape, those have to be kept permanently. But if a video recording was basically voluntarily made, like we're doing right now, and not the result of the Open Meetings Act, the board can destroy that recording after two things occur: approval of the official minutes, so tonight's recording, you'll get the official minutes at the next meeting, but also by approval of the local records commission. Lana's connected with the local records commission, and any videotaping done of a meeting voluntarily can be destroyed after sixty days of the minutes being approved. So if you approve the minutes at the next meeting, sixty days later, the recording could be destroyed. Related to that, we have a recommendation on the board policy. Lana added the language on page five. All regular meetings will be broadcast live and recorded via video and audio, as the board had asked us to do since that's procedure. Recordings will be made available seventy-two hours after the meeting and will remain available until blank. The board could put anything here. Our suggestion would be, what would be the wording? Our suggestion would be until voted on to be destroyed along with the regular minutes cycle. So just like the board approves to destroy minutes every, you know, every six months, you look back and you say what could be released or what audiotapes could be destroyed. Our suggestion would be that you just add that to that same cycle, and every six months, in addition to lists of audio recordings or official minutes, we would have video recordings from the previous six months, and the board could vote at that time to destroy those video recordings. That's a suggestion. You could fill in this blank with anything you want. You could say, we'll remain available until the year three thousand. I mean, you could put whatever you want there. We thought it might make sense to go with the typical cycle of when you're releasing closed session minutes or destroying any audiotapes.
Madam President? When we use the word destroy, I mean, essentially, we're just saying we're not going to publish them anymore, correct? Because anybody can take our recording tomorrow and download it, and it's still technically not destroyed. We won't publish it, but it's still in the public domain. Unlike the closed session minutes where we won't distribute them, we'll destroy them, and they're unknown to the public. I think the word destroy, it sounds, it sounds a little bit different than I think what we're used to. It's just not published by our district website anymore. Yes.
And we would take it off our YouTube channel. But yeah, could someone have recorded it already or downloaded it in some other way, and they have it? Yes, we would no longer have ownership of it.
You know, so one thing maybe thinking about that, I'm almost of the opinion that, though I appreciate that there should be maybe some type of review at some point, I'm just wondering if at this point, we're maybe too new at that particular piece. So my thought would be maybe just, you know, made available seventy-two hours after the meeting, period, and strike that be available until. You know, if we look at our board docs right now, they're, they go back X number of years already with information that's out there. So I think with the changing technologies and the views and things of that nature, having that information out there doesn't do any harm, right? And in fact, you know, Scott, you present, just because you take it down from YouTube doesn't mean it's out there. I mean, it's not out there, it's out there. So my thought would be just, hey, it's available seventy-two hours after the meeting. At some point, we can make then a decision, once we know a little bit more feel, or maybe it's after every five years. You just, you were rolling five years, you know, something of that nature. Five years, it might be worthwhile. But there are, I think, a lot of times where good meetings or good discussions happen or good information is presented that, you know, could be reflected on, you know, years, you know, years in the past, years in the future, however you want to look at it. But that might be something to consider. Yeah, exactly. Best of.
I know, I'm the one who brought this up the last meeting. I still think we should have a set timeframe. I still think, I mean, six months and with this modern technology, I'm just throwing a number out there, right? Is a legitimate amount of time for someone to view, watch, do what they want with it. I do think, you know, leaving it out there forever, and I also think it also helps us strike, hey, we're just going to add it to whatever our normal process is, and we just saying, okay, it's being removed. I also think it makes it available for the public to know that, hey, it's here for six, whatever timeframe we put out there, but they know it's only available for this timeframe. So I would encourage us to pick a timeframe. I know it's new. We could extend it longer than expected, to your point, and come backwards. But I do think you should put a timeframe on it just so that it's clearly understood how long it's going to be out there.
Madam President? Yes, Gina? I would offer, maybe we should contemplate a retain no longer than as opposed to the cycle. So I would also suggest that we think about whether or not we would want to retain the videos for a year, or at least a school year, simply because then we can look at if we needed a reference. Well, when did we talk about this achievement goal, or what was the last strategic update? I think that that gives our community a better reference to be able to look at the entire year of discussions as opposed to every six months. Might be an opportunity. But again, I think if we choose language, it should be retain no longer than and put a line in the sand. And my recommendation on that would be, and there's got to be some kind of a data retention policy with all of the Illinois privacy laws and facial recognition, et cetera. I can't imagine that we can keep these things indefinitely. But I would think that we could put something on it, two years, three years.
So Gina, I like the school year timeline.
You're going to think maybe two years, then you get the two cycles. You get the, you know, the school's calendar-type thing, and then you get the year prior. Because, I mean, you know, as an example, just thinking about our discussions about full-day kindergarten, we're not going to see that till 2024. And yet, we have a chance to reflect on, well, what did we say back then? You know, what we're going to do? We have a chance to, you know, reflect on those, look at those, do whatever, see what was presented, goals, all those types of things. So I think probably two years might be good. But, you know, even with that matter, maybe, you know, we take this one off the table and just reflect on it a little bit, and then come back, bring it back for next time. What's that? Well, let's get some more opinion of things, you know? I don't want to confuse the discussion.
I'm wondering if we keep deferring things, then does it log up, jam up the process? I'm wondering about the effectiveness and the efficiency.
Do you want to in terms, are you talking about in terms of the policy review?
How Rich had said, maybe we should defer it to another, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, just so we have a chance to reflect on it, is there, is there today a policy?
Is there, like Gina said, is there some, you know, video retention, privacy thing that we should? Maybe the ISB has weighed in on it or something.
So we've already researched that, which is what we were trying to reflect in our notes. I'm sorry, that wasn't clear. We've already referred, we've already looked into that. And again, if it was part of the executive order, we have to hold that video forever and ever. If it's something we're doing voluntarily, like the board is doing now, you have to hold it at least until sixty days after the board approves the official minutes. And the video is not official minutes, right? But it is, like you said, a resource that you could look back and utilize. We don't ever have to destroy them, ever, or destroy again. We don't have to ever take them off of our YouTube channel or stop publishing them ever. But the earliest we could do that is sixty days after you approve the actual minutes.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg?
We've heard some discussion over where that time limit could be, and I think it's worth considering, you know, the cost to the organization, either in time, energy, or money, to store them. And YouTube, there is no cost. And there is, I just want to amplify some, maybe Gina talked about the, there's a historical aspect to that, and since there's no cost to the organization, I would like to see that horizon out even farther than three years if we were to talk about it. But I, there's some language suggested of no longer than, or sometime after is the way we could pose it, something like that. So that at least we do have that leeway, but rather than committing to, this is when we destroy them.
So the board could, in relation to what Greg just said, and somebody, we had mentioned, you had mentioned earlier, the board could change this language to say recordings will be made available seventy-two hours after the meeting, period. The board could come back at any other time and say, hey, can we add an ending date on those if you want to do that?
I agree.
Okay, any further discussions? There's no amendments to that policy. We'll just call the vote now?
Well, I guess I, I'm just checking. I'm just checking, is everybody okay if, in the blue section that we added on page five, all regular meetings will be broadcast live and recorded via video and audio, recordings will be made available seventy-two hours after the meeting, period, and we strike the last phrase?
I would ask that we just put an end date on this. I know I'm going to be the stickler, but I feel like we just have to say, okay, later than this timeframe. And I mean, it'd be three years, whatever we pick, but I do think it's important that we like to, you know, we're just going to say, okay, it's going to leave it out there, and it just sits in the, you know, the internet world forever. And like you said, it can sit there anyways, but at least it doesn't sit on our public space. We know that it's the timeframe. We know what we're doing. And I think with a policy, I don't think you want to leave it open ended like that. I really think our policy is, we're doing this as a courtesy to the, you know, the community, to leave it available out there for them. It's available for this timeframe. At this timeframe, we no longer are going to make it available for you. And I think that's a fair assessment to do. And I think we just, if we want to do three years because it's no cost to us, I'm fine with that. I just think we should set an end date and not just leave it open ended at this point in time.
To Chad's point, can you remind me, Dr. Ben, what is the effective steps that other districts have taken around this?
To be honest with you, I don't know, because this is kind of new for everybody, the recording of meetings. I don't know that anybody's really gotten to that point yet.
Yeah.
Just one question, clarifying back to kind of the original suggestion, or whatever we want to call it. What's the, what's the, what's the duration for destruction of the minutes that we already do?
Yeah, so let me make sure I say this correctly, Lana. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? So we do, let's see, I'm going to look back on our things here. We revisit whether we're going to hold or release closed sessions, minutes for the previous eighteen, eighteen months ago, right? Pardon?
Closed audio is from the previous eighteen, from eighteen months previous, and closed minutes is from the past six months. The written minutes, the past six months, audio from eighteen months previous.
Thank you.
Just curious, I was just trying to see what alignment there might be there.
This is maybe a Stacy question, but do we have a time limit on FOIA? Would this be a FOI-able? I hate to open that Pandora's box or that can of worms, but would we have to, if somebody were, would we take it down prior to a FOIA limitation or the expiration of a FOIA request? I don't know if that's.
Yeah, no, so if we had a FOIA request, it means that that document or that recording is currently available. So if someone puts in a FOIA request, we can't, we have to provide the response to their FOIA. It doesn't mean that we can't take it down. But if they ask for the video of XYZ meeting and we have that, we have to provide it to them. But that's only for, like, documents or videos that we actually have on our person.
And maybe this is a question for the hallway, but do we own the video, or does it go directly to YouTube? So if we do take it down, then technically, it is destroyed. So that would be, that's just my open-ended question. We can maybe.
We'd have to check and get back to you. Or since we post the meetings on YouTube, do we own that YouTube channel or that, or is it?
Does it ever, does it ever sit in our possession, on a hard drive here somewhere?
Oh, yeah. Yes. The actual video, yes.
I export it, and then it sits on hard drives.
So maybe to your point, then, maybe we should have an expiration date, then we technically destroy it. It's public domain, but it's destroyed, our possession of it is destroyed. That would be my.
We can upload it from YouTube as well, so you can have both, or maintain that. Now somebody, so you can have both. So that.
And they could have different durations, too.
Yeah, that's just my, we do have two different versions of the video. One, we don't publish, and the other one, we do technically destroy.
So again, you could go with the last suggestion I heard, and will remain available for three calendar years.
Can I make, to that three-point, I was just looking at our website. So our minutes go back to 2015, July 2015. Our board buzz goes back to 2017, so six years on that. So maybe just to be consistent, is it, you know, maybe do we just say six years, and then we change it if need be at that point?
But again, you're also memorializing that video in the official minutes that you approve, right? Well, so, just saying, right? That doesn't mean that you can't also have the video.
Yeah.
Right?
People have access to the minutes, but they want to go see if actually on the video, it's only available for this timeframe.
Point, Scott, the minutes are always available, but I just feel like we, this way, we have a set time limit on the video.
Yeah, and I think you mentioned last month, if we put it in policy, it, there's no, it's black and white.
It's black and white. There's no questions if we, if somebody removes something. I like the end date, because then it's like, we are very clear, we're voting on it. It's clear public policy, people know exactly what's happening. It's not like, oh, they took down the last two years, well, because this is the, or they took down last year's meetings. The policy says it's up for this long, and then it's, you know, they just keep removing it. So it just feels very clear, as opposed to ambiguity, the ambiguity of, open up until we decide to make a change. So just my thoughts.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the policies as per sentence, with the exception of policy, I'm sorry.
Two colon two twenty.
Two colon two twenty, amending the retention of board meeting videos for a duration of five years. I think I didn't help me with that language. I apologize.
So he's saying, keep the language that says it'll be made available 72 hours after the meeting until four, four total of five years.
Second.
Okay, Lana, if you could call, yeah, that was Rich.
Someone's gendered, read this with me.
Yeah. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Conley?
I'm going to be a no, because I think five years is just a little long for me, but I'm just going to be a no, so that I, my opinion.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sriniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That would be memorialized for the board who sits here five years.
Okay, ISB 2022 resolutions. Dr. Bynne, if you could-
So I'll just give a, a brief heads up, that it's resolutions time, and it is much simpler and clearer than the last year, when the resolution committee paperwork seemed a little confusing for us. So you have this information, you need to, typically, you would come ready at the next meeting on November 15th with your vote on the resolutions. You have a copy of page 39 from the packet that would help, be helpful for you to come, have filled out, to help you in that discussion. And you're just voting on supporting the resolution or opposing the resolution. Even though the packet is very large, there's only eight resolutions that you need to vote on. On that vote sheet, just for your reference, Lana did add on the right a column of what the resolution committee recommends. But again, that's just information. You're really just voting to support the resolution or to oppose the resolution. Not the committee's recommendation, right? Well, so, and Anisha will just really facilitate that in November and use that phrasing so that you know it. She will gather everybody's input on November 15th, so that she has it for a couple days later at the delegate assembly.
Yeah, thanks for looking through it and kind of jotting down your notes, and we'll go quicker and more smoother this time. Thank you, Dr. Bynne, because I know you looked into kind of clarification and kind of streamlining, which made ISB think about it as well. So those are good questions that came from our board to ISB. We will now move on to, to the second community input. If there's any, Doc, Lana?
Okay. We're moving. I'm sorry? Yeah, there's a blue sheet right here, you can grab, we can wait a moment for you to do that.
Is there, perhaps we can make a, when the first public comment, we can conclude it with, if anybody wants to stick around, maybe we can make that announcement, because I know there's been several times where we've had some confusion.
Yeah, good ideas, good. I will add that to the script.
If I can remember that would be great. That's a great idea.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll add it to our script.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay, Ms. Vouchik.
Hi, my name is Avavuichik. I just have one thing about safety. So last year, when I was dropping off my daughter at school in the morning at Ivy Hill, she told me she forgot her gym shoes. So it was 8:50 a.m., and I left her at school, and I went home to grab her shoes. I came back, it was nine, maybe 01:01, and there were barely any kids walking into the school, but the door didn't ring yet, so the doors were open, there was nobody at the door. The doors were wide open, I was able to walk into the school. I went to her classroom, classroom, gave her the shoes, the teacher didn't even notice that I'm there.
Thank you for that input. Okay, we will now move on to future agenda items, topics with dates to be determined. So we have those listed for you, including the code of conduct review, the Illinois School report card. I think those are the two next topics.
Thank you. And any new topics from board members?
Madam President? I just, I don't know how to make the, structure the topic, but based on some of the comments that we heard earlier about the books and the topics, is there something that we should collectively looking at? Because, you know, based on what some of the parents, you know, brought up, it's concerning, and I'm, I tend to be pretty open about those things, but it seems pretty concerning, the subject matter and some of the, you know, some of the books that were presented. And again, just, I don't know if it's factual, not factual, interpretation, all those wonderful things, but I'm just wondering if we can have a discussion or maybe a review on, hey, these are some of the more maybe risque or challenging books, so that we can make a determination, are they truly appropriate for the community to have in the schools?
I, I will say that coming in front of the policy committee at the next policy committee meeting is Section 6. In addition to any press updates, Section 6 of the policy manual is instruction, includes a policy about curriculum objections, as well as a policy about library resources. So it was our intent to, when that section comes in front of the policy committee and then the full board, to share with you information specific about those policies, as well as the rest in that section at that time.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Earlier in our discussions, I had brought up the discussion about whether the district may or may not continue funding academic review classes. And what I want to say is, I was not trying to be premature, we're waiting on data, so maybe we wait and see what that comes up, and maybe at a future meeting, we can suggest that as a topic if needed.
Okay, thank you, Greg and Rich. Any other new topics? So as far as new-
I just, I just want to say, Rich had said about, like, understanding that, and it might be good, because I know, just if I remember, part of the conversation is that the LMC has marked certain books for a certain age. I think if I remember correctly, right, there were certain things that they had. I just want to make sure I understand, maybe all that would be good to understand, what the procedures is for kids and stuff like that, because I know there are, kid, certain books are restricted by age, and there are certain things that they can't check out, a parent has to ask for, if I remember correctly. If I remember my daughter's, having to sign something for my daughter at some point in time. But I think it's a good conversation to have, to, so that, because this is not about, you know, me asking about censoring the books, and this is more about, like, if it's age appropriate, if the person's an appropriate age, and they want to check it out, and a parent consents to it, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of that, as Rich said, because I understand it's a policy, but I also think it would be good to have a understanding of what's going on in the LMC from that perspective.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Okay, as far as the, the new, next topics, well, new topics, I also want to talk about that we're going to be having a board development session, and you know, per our principles, we are responsible for kind of accountability to ourselves and accountability in learning, and truly, you know, the, the research shows a board that learns together, leads together. So there's a couple of dates, we're going to try this a little bit differently, because I know sometimes, you know, Dr. Bynne sends out dates to us in a doodle, but since we're all right here, and we have our calendars with us, I'm going to ask if you have a couple of these dates open, so that Dr. Bynne can organize and arrange a board development for us. The dates are, so maybe we could do this, I'm going to say out the dates, if there's ones that don't work for you, let us know. And so then, Dr. Bynne has dates that she can work with and booking the ISB representative, because of course, everything we do, when we're having a professional development, we do it with the Illinois Association of School Boards. So- Yes. It's going to be evening. It's going to be the evenings, about what time, Dr. Bynne?
I think we were thinking 90 minutes, so if 6:30 to 8:00 works, or we can do 7:00 to 8:30.
Do you have a, if anybody has preference, like 6:30 to 8:00, or 7:00 to 8:30, is early? I know folks work and work further, is 7:00 better, is, as far as nailing out the time? Then, better than 6:30? Seven? Depends on the date, okay. So if you look at your calendars, I'm not sure, maybe I'll go one by one. Does October 19th not, just put up your hand if it does not work for you, okay? October 19th does not work, okay. October 24th does not work. October 27th does not work. Rich is a busy guy. November 1st? Yeah, yeah, no, get it, we get it. November 1st does not work. November 3rd? Nope. And then November 7th? Hallelujah? November 7th?
It's a Monday.
7 o'clock, November 7th? I feel like an auctioneer here. Going once. Chad, does that work? Okay. Okay, November 7th at 7:00 p.m. So we'll go with that date, and thank you, Dr. Bynne, when you were giving us, when you were giving me these dates, I was like, oh, that's pretty far ahead, but you know how a board works, so that's good. November 7th, and if you, you know, if you go home tonight and, you know, look at your calendar really a little bit more closer, if it is an issue, please come back and let Dr. Bynne and I know. So November 7th at 7:00 p.m. is- 8:30. Yeah, and-
Five years from now.
This year, 2022, not five, yeah. So, yeah, if you have any, you know, please let us know 24 hours from now, like, if you feel like that date's not going to work, because Dr. Bynne is going to be working hard to get us, and kind of arranging this, and we don't want to, we want to be sure we're respectful of everybody's time. So thank you so much. Other than that, you know, we do have to go into closed session briefly, but before we go into closed session, we're going to take a little break, the board's going to take a little break, for about 10 minutes to be with Mr. Harris for a board picture. Thank you, Mr. Harris. So I need a motion to adjourn, back into closed session? Yes, Rich? Yeah, second? All in favor? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you all for coming.